This conference will now be recorded.
Tricia, is there like a vacuum or something going on in your house?
No, you know what it is? It's my computer's security software. Can you hear that?
Yeah.
I also have Christmas music playing. I guess I'll turn that down, too. Hold on a second.
Okay, everybody ready? So let's go ahead and call to order the special meeting of December 17th, 2020. This is for the purpose of setting salaries. It's an unusual meeting that only happens every couple of years by our tradition. Title 16, the Pennsylvania statutes mandates that the Board of Commissioners meet at an advertised meeting in a specific evening hour so that we can afford the public the greatest opportunity to attend in order to set the salaries for certain elected officials. We hold in advance of the municipal elections to fix salaries of county officials who are running for election in the coming season. Hence, any votes tonight would take effect in January 2022 for the following four-year term. The code specifically states it shall be held central to the county. In this case, we're holding it online due to the emergency disaster and the state's allowance for meetings online. We believe it's the best course of action due to possible exposure to contagious illnesses, but also believe it affords our constituents easy access to our meeting. I reviewed the county code and various laws this afternoon with some interesting parameters, some of which Warren County has adhered to and some we've not. The code specifically says that all increases shall be on a percentage basis and applied equally to all elected, all county officials, except the lowest paid, other than jury commissioners and county auditors, in which case the coroner is that lowest paid county official. Just by the way, for your reference is the county code section 11011. There's a whole extensive space, but I was looking specifically at section 10E of that and where it says that the salary must increase until equal to county officials besides the jury commissioners and the county auditors who are on the low end and the commissioners and the district attorney who supposedly are going to be the high one. Warren County Commissioners, for at least the last few boards, have not followed this exactly, and as a consequence, we have a bit of an unequally evolved pay scale. During my tenure in 2016, the board agreed to a 2% across-the-board increase for officers being elected in 2017. Then in 2018, a majority of the board voted for a 1% increase for all except for the commissioners, which they set at 0%, which I believe is technically a violation, albeit self-inflicted, which has been the past practice of previous boards as well. It's interesting to note that the county commissioners are prohibited from fixing salaries during the calendar year which the commissioners are elected, but the law that I was reading does not explicitly say that salaries cannot be fixed during a term. I don't know if it's tradition or some other legal reason that we only set salaries once per term, but should we wish to set them in between for future, I think it may be possible, something to consider with the solicitor. I've heard of several neighboring counties, I talked to several neighboring counties today, some of which do that, they'll set the salary for these off-years at a six-year increment so that they coincide with the other elected officials that are on the four-year. Most official salaries were set in December of 2018. The remaining row offices we intend to discuss tonight, and that includes the preponitary and the coroner. We also had intended to discuss, and still may, the positions of judge of elections, tax collector, and inspector of elections. That said, I'm going to ask that the board consider deferring decision on them and only discussing the preponitary and the coroner tonight. Let me go ahead and explain why. The county code actually does not, is not the governing law that gives us the authority to set the tax collector rates or the judge of elections or inspectors. It's actually separate laws. The tax collector, unsurprisingly, is the changing of compensation of tax collector section within the local tax collection law of 1945 as amended. As a consequence, what it says is explicitly we have to do it before February 15th. So in our analysis of the other counties, there seems to be some wide variation on how the tax collectors' pay is set, and so I would like some more time in order to review it. That's one angle. The other is that it actually says it should be by resolution during a regular commissioners' meeting or an ordinance during the regular commissioners' meeting, which this is not. So I would ask to defer that. And then on the judge of elections and inspector, historically, we have set those in the, in this meeting. However, this past year, we really did a deep dive in the election code, as all of you on the call are well aware. And the election code is actually what gives us the authorization to set the salaries for those elected positions related to the election. And as a consequence, I really found that it should probably be done in an election board meeting. There is some variation on what each county is paid. I think we're within range, but my recommendation is that we open up an election board meeting on the 23rd and discuss those positions then. Any questions about those two? Any opposition to deferring those? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on.
I'm fine with deferring them. Does that all make sense? I was gonna say something else, but I'm gonna wait.
Okay.
I'm still trying to read through everything at the same time you're talking, so I apologize.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and plan on deferring those. Let's move on to the preponitary and then the coroner. What I'd like to do is just read my thoughts and then open it up to Tricia and then Jeff for their comments and thoughts, as I may be way off base of where the board is, but I'd like to present my recommendation. So in 1980, the state by statute set the salaries for the row offices and the commissioners. It's a good read. At the time in 1980, 40 years ago, the coroner was set at $7,000, which in $2020 has a purchasing power of about $22,000, which is a little bit more, a couple thousand dollars more than the current coroner's salary. In contrast, the commissioners were set at $19,000 in 1980, which would be almost exactly $60,000 in $2020 power, which is several thousand dollars more than what we currently make. The sheriff was set at $17,000, which is $53,720, while our sheriff is paid about $2,000 more than that. And the treasurer, based in 1980, and actually the register of recorder, the register of wills, the preponitary clerk of court, all of them were set at the same amount, at $17,000. And the treasurer's rate is still within, actually a dollar of the sheriff's rate. I have no idea how it got a few cents off, but it did. The reporter of deeds and register of wills started at the original rate, but is now a couple thousand dollars lagging. And the preponitary and clerk of court also started at the same rate, but for some reason in between, it's for some reason like a thousand dollars less than the treasurer and sheriff. So all that to say, the purchasing power of the dollars paid by statute 40 years ago is still approximately in line with today's dollars, so the offices vary some. The preponitary is slightly below the others. Therefore, my recommendation is that the preponitary be brought up to the level of the treasurer and the sheriff for the same reason. That'd be an initial bump of $430, but then only with a 1% increase, just like we have with the sheriff and the treasurer current and the register and reporter, so that over time it nets out cost-wise to county, but it puts the row office on the same track again as the other two row offices. So that would be, in 2022, a salary of $57,051.89, the following year, $57,662.41, the following year, $58,198.63, and then in 2025, $58,780.62. As a side comment, I hope that we as a board in 2022, in advance of the 2023 election cycle, will likewise set the other elected officials using the same reasoning or adjusting everybody using new reasoning. So namely, the register and reporter and the commissioners would be increased up to the same level as the others, and I guess also add that $1 back into the treasurer so that he's equal, or that that position is equal. Does that make sense? Do you have any questions for me at this time? Again, that recommendation would not be any different to the county over the course of four years in terms of cost to the county, but it would, I think, be positive for equality stakes.
So your recommendation for 2022 is $430 increase and then incremental X percentage over the next three years?
Yes, and that incremental increase would be 1%,
Right.
which is, you know, less than other counties, but it is what the current board set, or excuse me, the previous board of commissioners set for the other elected officers. So although you have the $400 increase now, if you were, for instance, to do 1.5%, that'd be what, 120 bucks or something? So that increase would, actually, yeah, it would just net out.
I think that's fair. I'd just like to preface everything by saying that, you know, we are in a pandemic and we have seen a lot of layoffs, which aren't necessarily the result of the pandemic, but I do believe that going forward, we may see additional. And I do get concerned by, you know, making any large changes not knowing the future of what that tax base is going to be, given our shrinking market as far as employment goes, as well as, once this pandemic ends, what's left from businesses on the other side. So those are the things that I take into consideration as I'm looking forward. And while it's not 2021, those same themes seem to be, you know, could be playing through as we move forward, apart from and aside from a pandemic.
Sure. This time I could either move on and explain my reasoning on the coroner, or we could take a vote on the preponitary.
I mean, I'm fine on taking individually addressing them.
Okay. Jeff, you're muted.
Do you still hear the vacuuming sound in the background, just as a question? No?
No.
Yeah, I'm fine with taking it piecemeal. I think that everybody wants to have a conversation about the coroner anyway, hence the coroner's presence at the meeting. I keep meaning to say hi to you, but I've been too busy reading. I apologize. I'm fine with making a motion to adopt Commissioner Caffelin's recommendation of 1% increase for the preponitary over the course of four years. Is the $430 different than 1%?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, I'm fine with that, too. So, so as you've stated, $430 for the first year and then 1% every addition year, that would be my motion to adopt what you're suggesting. For the preponitary.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Pam, did you get it clearly?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, on the coroner, I'm recommending a rather large change. As stated, the commissioners have the discretion to bring up the lowest paid eligible row officer, which is the coroner. The responsibilities of the coroner have changed pretty dramatically over the last 40 years, especially over the last five years. There's a significant amount of increased time and responsibility to the job with additional reporting, training, and technical skill needed to do the job well. In contrast, the other row offices will be making about $27.42 per hour in 2022. The coroner's current pay is closer to $14 an hour based on 2020 hours worked. While it's hard to get an exact measure of hours the coroner will likely spend in a year on the job, really, it's a moving target to figure out what the preponitary, the sheriff, the treasurer are going to spend on the job. It's still pretty clear that there is a wide disparity between the two hourly rates, and my estimate is about $13.50 spread. So maybe it's $12 different, maybe it's 14, I don't know, but the coroner is still making approximately half, at least a third less than what the rest of us are making hour per hour. At the same time, the current coroner has cleaned up many legal and regulatory hurdles in the last year, moved the county to a digital system for record-keeping and compliance with state mandates, and cut costs on the 1099 personnel, and as an aside, doesn't cost the county anything in health benefits. Documentation that the coroner provided to me indicates that she's worked about 1,500 hours this year, while COVID accounted for maybe 100 of those hours in 2020. And the fact is, even though COVID hopefully will not be as significant in 2021, she will be dealing with other urgencies, whether it's another pandemic or a month's worth of work in the future that are going to be spent on cleaning up reports and digitization of the paper files going back for decades. So my recommendation is to take an approximate 1,500 hours and multiply it by the approximate hourly rate of $27. I rounded it down for an annual salary of $40,500. And then, just like preponitary and all the other offices, set a rate of 1% as an increase beyond that. So that would mean my recommendation for 2022 is $40,500, 2023 is $40,905, 2024 is $21,314.05, and then 2025, $41,720.19. As a general comment, I would much prefer that, starting in 2023, the commissioners find a way to link future increases of elected officials to the federal cost of living adjustment, which should generally near the inflation rate, rather than picking an arbitrary 1% or 2% or whatnot, and of course, make everybody consistent, all the officials across the board, to bring us to the compliance with the code. Coroner Zadonik, did you want to say anything?
I think at this time, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having me. And I realize that this is a public meeting, but I appreciate you giving me the heads-up and the opportunity to present this. I think, and I'm gonna be careful what I say. For many reasons, I think all of you pretty much know why, but I just want to say that although I did put in the extra time this year with COVID that we have had to deal with, with the pandemic, I think I have definitely been able to professionalize the position. And going forward, there is still going to be an exorbitant amount of work that needs to be done, as you stated, Commissioner Caffelin, about the, all of the records and the record-keeping and the cleaning up of the records and just bringing everything up to date so that they can be found, so that they can be utilized, so that when the public comes to me or law enforcement and the, now I'm receiving requests from some of the attorneys that I'll actually be able to find what I'm looking for. So, you know, it's kind of a, sorry, that was kind of a roundabout rambling that I just went on, but just saying that there is a lot of work that still needs to be done, and there is no lack of hours that are going to be put into, into this position. So I will continue to bring everything up to as much of a current state as I can.
Thank you. Commissioner Durbin, any thoughts?
Well, I have a couple of questions. One, what is the coroner's current base pay?
Pretty close to $20,000.
Pretty close to $20,000 even per year?
Give or take $200, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, I did, somehow I thought it was more like 29, so I apologize for that. And it is, you know, it's, I guess my only hesitation is, A, it's a really big step change, so I wasn't expecting a recommendation like this. And Melissa, I know you're, the quality of work that you do, and I appreciate everything that you do, and the fact that, you know, you are moving that particular position up to, you know, a high professional quality service, and also recognize that, you know, this whole pandemic couldn't have come at a worse time, right? When you just got into office, so. Are the only options then, then this is the question, are the only options that we have, setting aside making a change in the base wage, could the commissioners grant a different amount for the additional work that Melissa's done as it relates specific to the pandemic? Or is this the only means by which we have to reward hard work and extra effort during the year?
To be clear, are you asking if we could do a one-time bonus?
Yes.
Okay. We did look into that before, and the answer was no, we couldn't. The way that we got around it last year was, was it two years ago already? She had been working 1099, and so when she became acting coroner, for consideration for the vast amount of hours that she worked unpaid, we gave her a 1099 reimbursement, if you would, for hours worked, kind of right before she took office, or maybe right as she took office. But no, there's no other way, no other means that I can think of.
With the, yeah, with the elected official positions, nobody really likes public or, or, you know, folks that work within the county, like gifts or bonuses or anything for elected officials. It's not legal, and at the same time, it's frowned upon.
Well, I mean, I think legal comes first, so I appreciate that. I've been frowned upon many times in my life.
It's a good question. I just, you know.
And then I guess the next question would be, I'm sorry, that'll be my last one, but so the next question would be, what are the, are the costs in the departments, the overall costs in the department changing as a result of you taking office?
I was just gonna ask if I could address that. So one of the things that I didn't say, and again, I apologize, I'm, I'm struggling to get things out here. It's been, as you all know, it's been a really long couple of days. So in addition to professionalizing the position, I am also really the only person who's taking the calls. So that being said, I, I don't have a, I do have a deputy, chief deputy, who is able to assist me at times, but I don't really count on him. I actually utilize him very, very little for many reasons, but, so, that being said, I'm not utilizing really anyone else in the county. I've now taken all of those deputies out of what I'm doing, and I'm, I'm doing the job myself. So I'm doing 100% of the administrative work that I think may have been passed on, and then I'm also taking all of the calls. So I'm not spending additional money on, on other deputies out and about in the county, so it's just incorporated into the salary. So I'm hoping, in that respect, that I'm actually saving the county money.
Can you speak to any other cost increases or decreases?
I think, again, this is really difficult for me to, to say because I don't have, I don't have previous records to really go by, so it's, I'm initializing things as I'm going. So there were a lot of things that weren't, weren't documented, and I didn't have records to go from in the beginning, so I really can't say from two years ago to this year how much things have changed because I don't have a record of what was actually spent or how it was spent, and what a lot of the costs were at that time, other than some of the workforce and the deputies that were being used at that time. I probably didn't answer your question at all, did I?
I think you did.
I wish we had that number, but my memory of the budgeted number for deputies was substantial previously. I mean, it was at least $5,000 in my memory, but it might be more than that, might be at least seven, I can't remember. And I do realize, I mean, I think it is important to note that the deputies were heavily utilized previously to handle calls, so, you know, I think it's fantastic that we've kind of transitioned away from that. I think Mr. Zadonik has done an amazing job as coroner, from what I can see, and my experience working with her has been incredibly positive, and her professionalism in the job is very welcome. With that in mind, I do kind of agree that what's being proposed is pretty, it's pretty big in the sense that, you know, we're gonna be, with this proposal, essentially doubling the salary of the coroner right out of the gate, and I wouldn't say that it's not entirely appropriate, I just, I think that to do that one fell swoop is a real challenge. And I think that, I think that, you know, visually and then also, you know, you know, trying to justify that, because there's a lot of other folks in other positions that would come to the table and say that they're doing more work than they should be doing, that they should be paid a great deal more, and, and, you know, I think they'll have an issue if they, you know, perceive that there's, the benefit is too great. So my recommendation, I guess, would be, or counterproposal would be to split the increase in half, to get up to 20 an hour, which would be, which would end up being $30,000 instead of $40,000 for 1,500 hours, and then and that would still be a $10,000 increase, which would be more than what we're paying the deputies and a substantial increase on top of that, it's being allocated in the corner. And then I would say 1% from there on, there on out, and And then I would say 1% from there on, there on out, and, and, uh, you know, I mean, we've done, I think we've done similar raises for people in departmental positions in order to get them into a place where they're closer to being on par with what the industry should justify. So I, I would be, I would suggest maintain in the middle on it, and then going from there. And then in four years, I think the position will still be the lowest, we'll still be able to raise it and try to get it to a point where it's leapfrogging, I shouldn't say leapfrogging, catching up to the others.
Mr. Durbin, any thoughts?
I, actually, those are pretty close to my sentiments, honestly.
And I would just say, I would just add, like, there are a number of people that I think that are underpaid here for the work that they do. There's a lot of people doing amazing work, and I always wish that we could give them more. But I, for me, this seems like a, I think, I don't think that the request is unwarranted or, you know, by some standard unjustified. So I don't want to disparage it, but I, me, that would be the measured response.
So did I hear a motion for?
Since nobody's, since nobody's torn my arm off and beat me with it, I will make a motion to increase the coroner's pay to $30,000 a year, starting in 2022, and then to increase by 1% every year thereafter, and until 2025. And I don't, I don't have, obviously, the exact number of what the base pay is, but it's 20, it's like 20,000 something.
Right.
It sounds like 200.
I, I'm supportive of that motion. I'll second that motion.
Uh, motion made and seconded to set the coroner's base salary at $30,000 even for 2022 with 1% incremental updates in 2023, 2024, and 2025. Discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I just, I just stress that, you know, I have the utmost respect for the current coroner and the work that she's done. And I just, I can't say enough good things about it because it's just been a headache-free professional experience.
Yes. Melissa, you do a great job. I appreciate everything that you do. And it's, you know, like I said, very unfortunate that you became an elected official right when all of this pandemic came along and then the new, new, nudist of the job, and you have done a great job, and I'm very hopeful that the latter part of 2021 is much less busy than what you're experiencing right now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, for my part, you know, it's not quite what I think is fair, but at the same time, I think it's movement in the right direction. And it's above, I viewed it really as very disappointing when I saw that the inflation didn't, it didn't even match up with the original 1980s schedule, so at least we're getting above that threshold. Kind of above the minimum that I, if it was less than that, I would have voted no. But as it is, it's movement in the right direction.
Frischa, do you, Frischa, do you have a barber shop in your kitchen? I don't know what that sound is, but I can barely hear Ben over the buzzing that's going on.
Here, hold on. Try this again.
Since I don't know how much was heard, I thought that a very minimum floor that had to increase $2,000 to at least meet inflation from 1980. It's almost embarrassing that, that the commissioners' pay and the coroner's pay did not at least meet inflation. But although I don't necessarily agree with the reasoning, I do think it's movement in the right direction, so I'll take it. And I'll be supportive as well. Thank you very much for your reasoning. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'll take the votes. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
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 Okay, so ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. As I said already, the other, the others will defer the election one till the 23rd. And January, actually, is when most of the other counties around us are voting on the increase for the, excuse me, the, the rate for the tax collectors. So let's add that to our first January meeting. Any questions this time?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that I, I've tried to read through everything in as detailed a fashion as I can, and I agree with pretty much everything that you have said. The only thing that I'd really like an ironclad statement from the solicitor on is the, the, the whole percentage should be consistent across the board. I just want to, because I, I've been trying to find what you're referring to, and I just, I'm having a hard time. And that's, like, I haven't, I haven't seen that before, but all the other stuff makes perfect sense. And, and there's, you know, clearly a legal reasoning for it, so.
Yep. Here it is. Section, so we're in Title 16, 11011-10.1. E, any salary increase shall be on a percentage basis and applied equally to all county officials. And then it has the clause about the lowest paid official can be raised up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that we'll find it or whatever. I just, I was having a hard time picking it up, that's all. I started looking at this.
Yeah, I sent you both, um, and the solicitor, my notes about an hour ago in advance of this meeting. You'll find in footnote one, section E, the exact terminology, which I took from the code. And yes, I, I mean, I, I agree that it would be good to get a solicitor's opinion on that. The main thing I want the solicitor's opinion on is the tax collector increases in rates because I was thoroughly confused. I normally think I'm pretty dangerous reading the law, but I did not understand at all. Not, I can't pretend to even understand a little bit. I mean, my basic interpretation was that we are one player amongst the tax, the municipalities and the school districts in setting that rate, and so I don't know how we set it on our own. But either way, we'll want a solicitor's opinion on that for sure.
Yep.
If you think about it, reasoning does sound logical, so.
It does.
Of course, I keep using that word.
Yeah, it's government, Frischa, stop. Okay, is there any more, in special business, we can't bring up any more topics, but is there any more comments to be said, or public comments?
Can I just, real quick, I just wanted to say thank you again for the time and the support that you've given me. I very much appreciate it, so I, I hope to serve you well in the next coming year and, or two, or three or four, however many years I end up here. And so that being said, I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Melissa.
Um, real quick announcement, since I have everyone here. The Director of Public Safety has asked that we have an executive session in the morning pertaining to pending litigation particular to a particular township and their emergency services. So.
And another one.
It's the same one.
That was a joke. There'd be any other.
Technically, I need to give you 24 hours notice unless you can both attend, so it's something like nine o'clock work.
Uh, let me check my calendar right now.
Pam, does that work for you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Do it right after the meeting with the judge?
I was going to say, I have a COVID courthouse weekly call on my calendar.
Should be eight thirty to nine.
And then we can go into the executive.
Okay.
That sounds you, go to meeting then?
Yeah.
I'll make sure to take my ibuprofen early.
I'm gonna have to cancel my massage.
I need to get the Tylenol migraine bottle out again.
Okay, well, we'll talk to you then at nine o'clock tomorrow in executive session again for pending litigation. Thank you.
Do adjourn?
Yep, motion to adjourn. Actually, special meeting, it's adjourned.
There you go.
There you go.
Take the bullboy loris.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Have a good night.